Good evening. Welcome to the January 21st, 2021 City Council Meeting. Excuse me. I'm Jelena Shara. I'm the Council President and I will be presiding this evening. We will begin as always with public comment. I'll note that this meeting and all who are participating with it, in it with us on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand feature. It has moved, so it is now under reactions, I believe. So if you click on that button at the bottom of the bottom bar under Zoom that says reactions, you should see an option to raise your hand. If you're having any trouble, feel free to chat to me. And/or you can try and raise your physical hand and I'll try and see you. We don't have so many people here that I think I will be able to do that. So but feel free to use the chat, but this is the only purpose for which we'll use the chat and only be used during public comment. I'll unmute each raised hand. One might want to ask if you'd like to make a comment when you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has equal opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. After three minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond to you. You may speak on any topic. Doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. And I ask that all but the council, well, this is going to go against the raise your hand thing. Later on, when we convene, I'm going to ask that all but the council turn their cameras off because only those who have the floor are recognized. And we'll do our best to act quickly if someone is clearly acting in a way that's inappropriate or just deploying profanity or slurs or just playing something outside of what we would expect to see in council chambers. And I'll remove anyone that needs to be removed from the meeting. If you don't wish to comment, you can always watch on Channel 15 or by streaming on North Hampton Open Media through their YouTube channel or their other platforms. And the recording of this meeting will be available at North Hampton Open Media's Government Video Archive Channel on YouTube. And I thank them as always for that public service. And we're always happy to receive comments by email. They're equally part of the public record. So email us at citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. And I see a few hands. Oh, okay. So someone's telling me in the chat that the raised hand feature is where it's always been, which would be at the bottom of the participant panel. So wherever it is for you, it might depend on whether you've upgraded your Zoom to the latest version. It's either under reactions or in the, in that participants bar at the bottom. So we're going to start with Amy Francis and Amy, thank you for telling me about that.
Hi. Hi, City Councilors. Thank you all for being here tonight. I am Amy Francis, Ward Four in Northampton. I'm here to talk about defunding the police. In creating a safer community for us all, including my peer group of white business and property owners, we absolutely need to drastically defund the police and move these funds into services that provide for an actual safer community for all of its members, not only but including the privileged, wealthy white folks. We need to support efforts and organizations that are accountable to people with lived experience, organizations that are peer-led, not social service agencies, which have no accountability to the people they aim to serve. We don't need people who are armed being first responders to mental illness calls. We don't need people who are armed to escort staff to their cars, homes at the end of a late shift. We don't need people who are armed to de-escalate problem situations at businesses. We don't need people who are armed addressing domestic violence calls or crime scenes of any kind. In fact, in all these situations, someone carrying a weapon can make these situations far worse, as proven over and over again with the number of people killed at the hands of police officers who are the first responders to these calls. In looking at how to replace police officers, we need to look past the big social service agencies like CSO and ServiceNet. They often do not treat people with respect and many people fear reaching out to them because of it. We need a support peer-led organization that are accountable to people with lived experience of criminalization. We can create this. Our city needs it and we have plenty of resources to create these services for everyone, creating a safer community for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Eli Marlin.
Hello, my name is Eli Marlin. I live at thirty-three Ward Ave and I'm the Vice Chair of the Youth Commission. You've all heard me speak on the issue of the polystyrene reduction and sustainability ordinance many times. But I wanted to bring it up hopefully one last time and just talk about, you know, how hard we've worked as the Youth Commission and how important we believe this is. So we've done extensive outreach to all the businesses, as I've said many times. And we have tried to compromise. We think we've done a pretty good job with that, with this ordinance. And, you know, something that I think a lot of people have forgotten about the climate crisis is that it is a crisis and is time-sensitive. And it is, the longer we push things out, the worse it is going to get. So it's, it does have a timeline that is associated with it, as well as COVID. You know, we understand it's a difficult time for businesses and we don't want to put undue hardship, which is why the ordinance won't start until January of 2022 with options for extensions for businesses that need it. And yeah, I hope that you are all in as much favor of the ordinance as you were last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shauna Fishel.
Hi, I'm Shauna Fishel. I'm from Ward Seven in Leeds. And I'm coming to talk about food insecurity. And I also just want to mention this, I support what Amy was saying before about defunding the police. But what I wanted to come to talk to you about today is a community fridge. If you haven't heard about it before, they're spreading across the country and around the world, mostly in urban cities, but also in smaller communities. And I think that especially a data point that I learned today is Massachusetts has the highest rate of food insecurity in the last year than any other states. Community fridge, I've spoken to a couple of city councilmen, both Rachel and Alex, who support this idea. And I'm coming not for a request for any financial support, actually just community support and collaboration to have a mutual aid for food insecurity. And this is not meant for necessarily people that are houseless. Those folks usually know how to get food, but it's people that are facing food insecurity for the first time. It also approaches the concept of food waste, as well as giving opportunity for those that have usually turned to help to be able to give back as well. And the way that a food community fridge works is usually we place them in a place that is either well-resourced or a path that is well-used, such as Meadow Brooks in Florence and the bike path there. And it doesn't have to be a full fridge. But concerned citizens and even businesses can help support the effort, either by supplying the electricity, by coming together to provide food, to build a shed, to clean it out bi-weekly and just to coordinate efforts with the fridge. And I hope that this will just be the first fridge among many. So not just in Northampton, but thinking about how we can use this mutual aid project in order to connect to other less-resourced communities next to us, like Holyoke and Springfield, and really create a value-wide mutual aid not to combat the food insecurity. I know that I've been in touch with Rachel and Alex. If anyone here wants to sort of support this project, I'm sure that they can provide my email. And thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Marty Nathan.
Hi, everyone. I'm, I just want to speak very briefly. First, to thank the Mayor's Youth Commission for its excellent leadership on the plastics reduction ordinance. Second, to thank the council for your unanimous passage of the ordinance and amendments at last council meeting. And finally, to thank all of us for having a new administration, which will be finally acting on climate change. And the plastics reduction ordinance will be part of a whole path forward to fight climate change and bring justice. It couldn't be happening at a better time. I, I wish, I hope that it is passed unanimously again tonight on second reading. And thanks to y'all.
Thank you. Okay, next, Lil P.
Hello, my name is Lily. I'm from Ward Six A. I'm here to tell my own personal story specifically as a youth. This year during a mental health crisis and domestic dispute between me and my mom, the cops were threatened to be called on me by a family member who did not have information of any other mental or policing alternatives. The police were not contacted. Northampton does not exist in a vacuum. People whose only experiences with cops and authority have been negative. People who have heard stories of other people's negative interactions can't be expected to respond a certain way in police encounters or get assaulted. I'm here to ask that me and people like me get the support they need. Peer-led, community-based intervention de-escalation to both mental health crises and domestic issues, going beyond social service organizations that are not accountable to me, is what I'm asking for. Then providing information on these resources so that community members of Northampton can use these tools. This is not a radical request either. In places like Toronto, there's the Reach Out Response Network and locally, the Wildflower Alliance. Transformation to Mental Health and Domestic Crisis Response are taking place and it's Northampton's responsibility to support its community members.
Thank you. Vex Von Goler, next.
Hi, um, my name is Vex Von Goler. I go to NHS. I live in Northampton. And I'm also a part of the Mayor's Youth Commission. I just wanted to comment on the plastic reductions sustainability ordinance. And so just like that, as a younger person, I think the climate crisis is super important. And this ban would not only, it would like, it would help reduce the amount of plastic created, leading to less like carbon emissions caused by creating and shipping, but it also creates less plastic to be thrown away that can be dangerous to the environment in other ways. And I just joined the group that worked on this bill like five months ago at the beginning of the school year. So I got left for like kind of the easier stuff. But I know there were a ton of people who like, who put in so much work to like draft the bill and write it, write it out. But anyways, I just wanted to say like, I think it's super important. I hope it passes. And I think like the environment and the climate is like, is really important because it's something that my generation's going to have to live with for a long time. But that's it.
Thank you. Next is Kit Sangboos.
Hi, my, yes, my name is Kit Sangboos and I live in Northampton. And I just want to say that I am so grateful to Councilors Dwight and Mayor and the Northampton Youth Commission and Rena Pi for crafting this plastics reduction ordinance. We know that we have a huge plastics problem. And this is an opportunity for all of us to use products and alternatives that don't increase carbon emissions and exacerbate the climate crisis. So thank you for supporting this ordinance. And I want to say thank you to our community, the whole Northampton community, that I wish, I hope that we can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jose A, who's next?
Hello. I'd like to note how sort of violating and insulting it is that for the most part, the priorities still for the past several months have been all over the place when they should really be focused on providing humanitarian relief for people on the street. I took a walk yesterday and there's more tents and there's more people in need. And there's more people who look like they're in need of mental health services. But, you know, it's not a, it's not going to happen without assistance. There's too many people and the stress is on the cost or it's too much. And I think it's appalling that everyone's talking about plastic bags and getting paper bags when on the street, we're trying to have some accountability in the town for how we're being policed. No one cares about us. You're trying to save the environment for poor people. What about on the street? I'm more likely to be killed by a cop trying to provide service to someone on the street that I'm trying to help than I am for my long-term climate destruction at this point. I think that people really need to recognize that the money and pollution that goes into making those weapons that the police have in the gear that they have far outweigh any plastic bags and you equip them every year. So whether it comes from the police budget or not, where's the collaboration for some, for some relief for these people? The streets are filling up and soon it's going to be the prisons filling up. Instead of this whole time, use your positions on the city council, disrupt the process. You know, change, change the order of things. Suggest something. Suggest the Department of Housing. Do anything. Everyone in history is going to know that for months, people have been asking you for some, something and that the thing that you provided was inadequate. You communicate like an eighty-year-old white man with emotional blockages. And you're just, you're not listening to the people who are in need of mental health services. We need to provide them with an alternative that isn't the police. We have so much money. We have so much money to do transitionary shelter programs and to bring them to the hospital, to the doctor's appointments that they need and to give them the resources they need. And you're choosing to allow the regular, whatever, plastic bag, AT&amp;T, what trees are you going to cut down? Are you going to build a rotary? How is that, any of that important in the middle of a worldwide pandemic that almost half a million people in this country have died? That you're still voting on the regular agenda? Do something. Disrupt the process. Make a vote. Walk away. Quit the meeting. Okay? You're complacent at this point.
Please.
By voting on the regular.
Can you, wait, I also need you to state your name and your city or town for the record, please.
I, Jose Adasta, Northampton, and I'm actually in Ward One A.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good health to you guys.
Sorry, didn't mean to press that. Okay, Counselor Nash, I have not forgotten that you have Hildegard on the phone. So let's, let's go to Hildegard and then we'll go back to this list.
You ready, Hildegard?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, can you hear, hear her?
Yes.
Okay, you're on. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Hildegard Friedman, G sixty-eight, in Cahill Apartments, Government Housing. And I want to apologize that I didn't pass message at the city council complain that Northampton Housing was doing nothing about a doctor's letter advocating that because of my peripheral neuropathy, I needed to get out of a flooding housing building, which is indeed Cahill Apartments. They have now begun to offer me to assist with the move and they are apparently going to do everything. But I will know soon if they're going to get me an application that will take a year to progress. But I am working very carefully with Danielle McCogan under the aegis of Jack Redman, who is Senior Property Manager. Hildegard Friedman, G sixty-eight, Cahill.
Thank you, Hildegard. Next is Ben Brezlow.
Hi, I'm Ben. I'm resident of Northampton. I think it's either Ward One or Two, whichever one Eli is from. I'm sure he knows. And I'm just here to also throw my support behind the plastic bag ban. I think it's a really important step to take and something that we can actually do. A lot of goals for the climate crisis seem very far out of reach, but this is something that we can actually do and we can make a difference on and we can help stop this before it gets too out of hand, if it isn't already. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashwin Ravi Kumar.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashwin Ravi Kumar and I live in Amherst and I am a professor of environmental studies at Amherst College. And I also serve on the Amherst Town's Energy and Climate Action Committee. So I would first like to commend you for your action on the plastics ban and say that I am in support of it. And what I wanted to do was draw a connection between your important work on environmental issues and your work on climate change to issues around policing. So if there's one thing that recent developments over the last five, 10, 15 years have made clear, it's that climate justice is fundamentally and must be about racial justice. And while we wait and organize and hope for funding from the federal level and at the state level too, to allow us to enact a deep energy transition away from fossil fuels towards renewable energy with more public transit, with public housing that puts people closer to where they work so they don't have to rely on polluting transportation, it's also important for municipalities to take action. And there are actually really direct connections between policing and climate and the environment that I hope you will take into account. So in Amherst, one of the things that we discovered as part of our work on multiple commissions across the town is that the police are actually a pretty darn big emitter of carbon dioxide themselves. Their patrol vehicles spend hundreds of dollars a day on gasoline, which has pretty large emissions compared to the overall municipal fleet of the town. I have to imagine that the numbers are similar in Northampton, given the number of patrol vehicles. There's a simple solution to that. Cut down on patrol vehicles, cut down on the police budget and reinvest in programs, peer-led systems that you've heard so beautifully about from folks here that keep us safe, that allow unhoused people to have a dignified life, that provide people with environmental education. At the end of the day, if we want to build the political coalition that's going to go to bat, that's going to help you to pass even bolder actions on environmental and climate issues, we need to have everyone feel safe in this community. And to do that, we need to invest in public safety. We could, for example, and there's so many different ideas out there, you shouldn't just listen to me, but instead of paying for dozens of cops and just a couple of staffers tasked with decarbonizing the entire town of Northampton, we could have liaisons that bring energy efficiency programs to people in low-income housing. We could have people that try to give renewable energy programs to people that don't have access to them. We could have programming for youth to get involved in farming and provide access to people, access to youth of color especially, to green spaces that they don't currently have access to. All of these types of things would be very much in the spirit of what you're accomplishing with this important plastics ban and moreover, be responsive to the widespread national demands by the movement for Black Lives to defund the police and rethink how we imagine public safety. So I would encourage you to take this opportunity to not lose sight of the inherent connections between these issues and to act boldly on both as one united municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on time. Rye Buckley.
Hello, my name is Rye Buckley and I live in Ward Three of Northampton. I want to express my support for peer-led alternatives to policing. Our community has demanded them many times and those community members who most need them have demanded them many times. And I think we simply must create them. Specifically, in this comment, I want to talk about accountability. When the community demands services that are accountable to the community and to those most harmed by policing, we are not talking about citizen review or oversight boards for the police department. It has been shown over and over again that these boards are powerless to create accountability. Systems of policing are deeply entrenched in union contracts, city charters and further bureaucracy. These systems make oversight boards entirely ineffectual and do not change the fact that the police can take away the lives and liberty of members of our community, including the members of the oversight boards, without any repercussions. When we say we want services that are accountable, we mean that we want services designed by and run by members of our community and which have accountability to our community and their fundamental structure. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you. Okay, Emily Coffin.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. Yeah, thank you all for just like serving on city council. I know it's a thankless job. I wanted to sort of speak for a minute about some of the commentary both Chief Casper and Mayor Narcoitz made in the Gazette in the last couple of weeks. I felt frustrated by Mayor Narcoitz's comment about the budget, talking about how his opinion about being prudent hasn't changed. However, I feel frustrated by that because, and he talked about it not freeing up recurring revenue. However, like, his original budget had like $900,000 to take out of the stability fund and it went down to 50. So the only reason we're able to dip into the stability fund, we have been in the last like three months is because of the revenue that was freed up by the police budget cut. So it just feels like he's playing a little bit of a shell game with our money instead of trying to like actually help us take, like wean ourselves off this like institution of punishment and power and criminalization of the police and move towards a more restorative community. And so I just wanted to like name that. I wanted to offer a little bit of an anecdote that happened actually right after the last city council meeting where I was on call for my job and I had someone call me at one in the morning and they said they wanted to call the police on their like twelve-year-old child after a physical altercation. And, you know, we talked, I did my job, we tried to regulate and we decided to call Crisis. And Crisis said the only evaluation could happen at 4:00 PM, like the next day. And I followed up with Crisis and Crisis, and this was Crisis, you know, in And I followed up with Crisis and Crisis, and this was Crisis, you know, in Florence, our CSO Crisis. And they said that they only provide evaluations between the hours of 9:00 PM and like, I don't know, sometime in the morning in the ER. So if you don't have health insurance, so basically you have to go to the ER to get a Crisis evaluation at any time in the night. And also Crisis often just says, "Call the police" themselves. And so I just wanted to like name that as a thing that happened. And when that kind of stuff happens and then I see people, when I see Chief Casper strawmanning the Police Review Commission report in the Gazette and like making all these minute arguments about very minor statistics when the overall arching argument here is we don't want policing, we don't want, we don't think it's an effective thing to threaten people's liberty and freedom and lives to like solve community problems. And to see our city leaders acting with such hubris is just like really disappointing and I don't mean that disrespectfully, it's just, I hate when people like don't use power to like do good things and it's just like disheartening, so I just wanted to like bring that to City Council this week since it was so timely in the Gazette this week.
Thank you. Ezekiel Baskin.
Hi, Ezekiel Baskin, Northampton. I, this might be a little bit of a tangled comment, so I apologize. I'm not feeling the most articulate right now. I want to uplift what a lot of other people have been saying today. Jose, Amy, Lil, Ashwin, did really good comments. I just, I just today have been, and the past few days particularly, have been thinking about life being short. And the work of government being so long and taking such a long time to do things when people are dying now. And I know that the City Council of Northampton is such a, like it's a one level in this giant complicated mess of government, but it just, I hear really strongly that people need help right now. And I see that there is money, even if it's in the stabilization fund and is supposed to be held for making, you know, making things more stable later, like, this is a crisis now, it's been a crisis for over a year. It's really horrifying and people need help. And I know some things are happening, but it's, it's not enough yet. And I just, I, I know the, the power balance between the council and the mayor is really complicated, but I, I just ask, is there anything, can you, can you try to do more to get money and resources to the people who need them, even if it is unorthodox? Even if it is not strictly in the council's role or purview, like, people, we need you. And that's, that's just where I'm at today. It's, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ezekiel. Robert Eastman.
Hey, everyone, I'm Robert Eastman, I live in Ward 3. I just want to agree with what everyone else already said and to add on to what Ezekiel was saying to say, you know, to say, "What can we do to help you do those things?" Because we're, a lot of the people who are here speaking tonight are really dedicated and we want to make this happen. But what I wanted to speak about tonight is that while I was recently reading the mayor's plan for the resilience hub, I learned a surprising fact, which is that there are 67 houseless people in the entire town of Northampton, 21 of which are living without shelter. And maybe that's a big number compared to other towns, I'm not really sure how it compares or if that's a lot or a little, but putting a number on this problem really put things into perspective for me. Because if we look at the $880,000 that was cut from the police budget and that everyone asked to be real- reallocated, you know, if that was distributed among those 67 people, that'd be rent for a year. I'm gonna read the rest of what I have, because I'm running out of time. Unhoused community members and people facing precarity in Northampton have already identified the following needs. One is building permanent structures on Main Street in Northampton, like freestanding bathrooms and showers, sleeping structures and other structures supporting safe use of public property. And I know from working in a cafe on Main Street that these would actually be very welcome to many of the customers who came in, who, you know, I can't count the number of times in a day someone asked for a bathroom. One way to provide for these needs is unrestricted individual grants to unhoused people, which is something that social service agencies can't do here. And there's a lot of empirical evidence showing that this works, unconditional cash transfers work. One example is in Vancouver, they gave $7,500 Canadian unconditionally to get people to move into housing faster than their sort of similar Section 8 waivers work. And they actually ended up saving money by doing that. So yeah, I'm just a little confused like why we're spending $400,000 on a resilience hub, which will be a day center. How much is the contract gonna be with Elliot Homeless Services? You know, some of the recommendations in the Panhandling Work Group I think are good, but like the first one was the public messaging campaign. Like, that's just outrageous to me. We have the money to put in people's hands right now and to help them right now, so I am begging you to please urge the mayor to reallocate the money that was cut from the police budget and put it to where it's needed most here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ya Ping is next.
Hi, thanks, my name's Ya Ping, I live in Turner's Falls, I do come to Northampton quite often and as I could growing up in the area, I also came to Northampton a lot. I wanted to share a little bit about, on the topic of policing and creating a safer community and alternatives, I'm not sure if the commission, sorry, been going to commission meetings, if the City Council was sent information on the Brattleboro Report that just came out, I think in the last couple of weeks, so the, if not, the Brattleboro formed a commission or committee in some ways similar to the Policing Review Commission. They had a few key differences, it was funded, they pay, they were able to pay to consultants to help write the report and facilitate the process, and I think they also paid the participants in the committee stipends of, I think, $750. But if you haven't gotten a chance to read the report, I wanted to strongly recommend reading their summary and findings. It's a, the whole report's like 200-something pages, but the summary and findings are about 20 pages and might take like 10 to 20 minutes to read, depending on how carefully you read it, but they interviewed over 200 community members and I forget how many organizations, it was a lot. And I wanted to read a couple excerpts that are on the topic of both policing and social service response to mental health, as I think these are themes that folks in Northampton are thinking about and asking about a lot. But in Brattleboro, they did these community interviews and reported on the findings. So the finding, "Police participation and other involuntary interventions in mental, emotional, and spiritual health crisis response is ineffective and often harmful for many community members. While recognizing long waits for treatment and lack of beds as system-wide problems that need solutions, these mental health institutions as a whole appear to have very little acknowledgement of the way these involuntary practices are widely received as violent and traumatizing by those experiencing them and by the World Health Organization. Respondents who have experienced police response to an actual or perceived need for help related to mental and emotional health reported negative and harmful impacts from these responses. These harms include use of coercion, force, violence for noncriminal behavior, loss of autonomy over their healing, added trauma, and fear of seeking future help from mental health organizations that collaborate with the police and have the power to psychiatrically incarcerate them. Many of these police responses led to involuntary interventions ranging from forced contact with police during a personal health crisis to use of force, forced drugging and involuntary medication and/or psychiatric incarceration, which is involuntary hospitalization. According to the Brattleboro Police Department data, almost all dispatch calls for welfare checks are initiated by someone other than the person perceived to be in crisis." Is that the bell? Okay, I highly recommend checking it out, we can send links, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. All right, I don't see anyone else and there's nothing in the chat, so Laura, we'll convene the meeting, Laura, will you please take the roll?
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
You're muted. You're not, you should be able to mute.
Here.
Counselor Mayori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. First up on our agenda is the announcement of a public hearing on a package of National Grid Verizon poll petitions. These are for jointly owned polls, two of them, and National Grid poll petitions for single-owned polls, two of those, on Damon Road and on Bridge Road. So per Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 4th, 2021, at 7:05 PM on the following petitions of National Grid and Verizon New England jointly and of National Grid severally to erect poles and wires upon along, under, or across one or more public ways. So this is 20.174 National Grid Poll Petition for Bridge Road, the petition's number is 23303524. 20.175 Poll Petition, National Grid Poll Petition for Damon Road, petition number 23303524. 20.176 National Grid Verizon Poll Petition for Damon Road, petition 23303524. And 20.177 National Grid Verizon Poll Petition for Bridge Road, that's petition 23303524. The petitions are linked to this agenda if anyone wants to see them. And so we will be having that public hearing on Thursday, February 4th, at 7:05 PM. Next, I'm looking for any updates from committee chairs, I see Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Council President. So next Wednesday, the 27th of January at 5 o'clock, there will be a joint meeting between Community Resources and City Services on the topic of housing security. At the meeting will be four presenters, we'll have Jay Levy from Elliot Homeless Services, Jay Sashetti from ServiceNet, who will be speaking about the shelter at First Churches. We have Dana Bowden from Community Action, who will be speaking about supports for people around renting and eviction and things like that. Pamela Schwartz, former Counselor Schwartz, will be speaking for, representing the Mass Network to End Homelessness. So we're expecting some informed discussion and, and that I invite people who are interested in this issue to show up and join the discussion, it is a committee. So the public is invited to interact with, with folks and I'm hoping we're going to have a productive and thoughtful discussion.
Thank you. Other committee chairs? Or, oh, Counselor Dwight?
Um, just to announce that there's a continuation of legislative matter, the joint, not a joint hearing, but a joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Committee on Legislative Matters to discuss the proposed two-family home zoning that would allow by right across the city the development of two-family properties. And that meeting is on February 8th. Laura will help me as to what time, what, the 7? I think Laura, right, okay, 7 o'clock. So if you, if you have thoughts on that or would like to share or participate, please join us there, thank you.
Thank you. Moving into one-minute announcements or? Counselor Quinlan.
I just have a brief announcement to commemorate the passing of Mr. Norm Roy. Norm Roy moved to Northampton with his wife Kay and their daughters Debbie and Becky, settling on BlackBerry Lane here in the heart of Ward 1 over 50 years ago. Kay passed away a few years ago and Norm passed this morning. He was a longtime member of the Board of Directors of the Three County Fair, member at Northampton Country Club where he played almost daily until 2020. Parishioners of Blessed Sacrament Church would remember his voice from the choir and the local Irish community will miss his voice singing "Oh Danny Boy." He was a great friend to the Quinlan family and a father figure to my wife during her formative years. And I just wanted to express my condolences to his two daughters, his son-in-law and his four grandchildren, thank you.
Thank you for that and our condolences as well. Other comments or announcements? Okay, seeing none, Mayor Narcoitz, I believe you have a communication for us? Where are you? There you are, whoops, sorry, okay. There you go.
I just was waiting to be unmuted there, thank you very much, Council President, I appreciate it. And so this evening I have an announcement to the council and, and to the public actually as well. And that is that our, our Finance Director, Susan Wright, has announced that she will be retiring in June after a 36-year municipal career, 17 of those years with the city of Northampton. And as many of you know, Susan has dedicated her life to public service and local government. She began her professional career in working as a development specialist with Rural Housing Incorporated in Winchendon, Massachusetts, initiating community development block grant-funded projects in Worcester County. Soon after, in 1985, she simultaneously worked for the towns of Buckland, Colrain, Heath, and Shelburne as part of an elite corps of circuit riders who provided municipal administrative services to rural communities in the late 1970s through the 1980s. And from there, she worked as town administrator exclusively for Colrain for several years. And then from 1991 through 2004, Susan served as the Waitley and Longmeadow Town Administrator, 10 years in Waitley and three years in Longmeadow as town administrator in those two communities. Susan joined the city of Northampton in 2004 as business manager for the Northampton Public Schools, where she oversaw the finances of the city's largest department, working under three different superintendents in the school committee. And then in April of 2011, then outgoing Mayor Claire Higgins appointed Susan as the city's Finance Director following the retirement of Chris Pyle. As Finance Director, as you all know, but the public may not know, Susan manages the day-to-day financial operations of the city, including overseeing its three main financial departments, the offices of the Assessor, Auditor, and Treasurer Collector. Her responsibilities also include working with me on an annual basis to create the city's annual operating budget and capital improvement program as outlined in the city's charter. And most recently, Susan has taken on the enormous task of managing our access to the state and federal COVID-19 funding that's been so critical to our response to the deadly pandemic. And these are very complex and at times confounding programs. And as, as usual, she has managed to navigate them expertly on behalf of the city. And I just want to extend my heartfelt thanks and congratulations to Susan for her incredible service to the city. Her deep well of experience in municipal government and finance has been invaluable to our city and the unparalleled financial stability we've achieved over the last 10 years simply would not have been possible without her steady and trusted financial stewardship. So many of you know she's a, she's a Massachusetts native and a graduate of the University of Massachusetts and has been active in multiple professional organizations throughout her career. She's a member of the Mass Government Finance Officials Association, she's been a past member of the Finance Committee in the two, two of the towns in which she lived, Northampton and Charlemot. She's been on the Massachusetts Association of She's been on the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association, the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, the Franklin County Planning Board. She's also served as President of the former Greenfield Area Animal Shelter and was a founder, founding member of the Small Town Administrators of Massachusetts, where she developed lifelong friendships with her circuit rider colleagues who actually were recognized in recent years for that incredible groundbreaking work they did in small towns across primarily Western Massachusetts. So you may not know, but she also had, in addition to her skill and experience in municipal government, she's also an accomplished weaver and a longtime member of the Weaver's Guild of Springfield. And she attained certification from the Hill Institute in 2010 as a master weaver. And her work has been shown at local and regional fiber art shows and conferences. And her family, friends, and colleagues have been the grateful beneficiaries of her nights away from Excel spreadsheets, spent weaving amazing scarves and hand towels and other beautiful handcrafted gifts. So it's going to be an incredible loss to our city. And obviously, to me personally, I've had the great honor of working with her. She's been one of my closest advisors. And during my tenure as mayor, but obviously, we congratulate her on an incredible career and congratulate her on her retirement. I will be advertising the Finance Director position immediately. As you all know, this is a very critical position for the city and plan to convene a small screening committee to advise me on the hire. Her retirement date is June 29th, 2021. And so my hope is to be able to recommend an appointment to the City Council later this spring with a goal of hopefully having her successor in place at the beginning of June so that there can be some overlap before she departs at the end of June. Fortunately, she's leaving after the FY 2022 budget will have been completed and after the FY 2022 Capital Improvement Program will have been completed as well. So I wanted you to know this, I wanted the public to know this, and I also just mostly wanted to acknowledge her incredible contributions to our city over these 17 years. So that is my announcement this evening.
Thank you. Oh, I see some weaving down there. Thank you for sharing that with us. Susan, Director Wright, I don't, I can't possibly begin to express the depth of my sadness or my gratitude to you for your service. You are truly one of the most brilliant and capable people I've ever known. And it is, will be an immeasurable loss to Northampton. But I'm very happy for you and I'm very glad that the mayor commented on your weaving because I was getting ready to talk about your other life, but he did it for me. Thank you. Um, oh.
Want to let the Finance Director say anything on this either?
She is unmuted. I unmuted her a while ago if she'd like to speak. Otherwise, I know others would like to speak to her, I'm sure, so.
It's fine. I've enjoyed all my time in Northampton and just working with our incredible department heads has been an honor. And of course, our mayor and the City Council. It's been great. I loved all of my jobs in municipal government. I worked in small rural towns where I had to know a lot, a little bit about a lot of different things. And in Northampton, I got to concentrate and know a lot about a very narrow part of the municipal mission. But it's been great, but 36 years is enough. And I'm ready to do new things and have time at home, you know, with my family and my elderly parents and just be able to do something different.
Counselor Dwight.
Well, you know, I'm sure this is just this, we're going to have a lot of opportunities to heap praise on you and probably get obnoxious and uncomfortable for you. But I think that, yeah, as has been noted, your fluency in grace and sensitivity are actually a legacy that's actually embedded in the institution that we call Northampton. That would, and it frequently goes unrecognized, as the mayor pointed out. I mean, for the most part, people have no idea that you are essentially the skeletal structure that allows us to sustain ourselves and then struggles all the other issues that we deal with. So, and, you know, you know, your whole, your resume there, which really should not get any longer. It should stop by now anyway. I agree with you, I think it's time to retire clearly. But it gives you, it gave you an understanding and perception and comprehension that none of us can know or experience. And to be honest, I don't think I'd ever want to sign up for something quite that dense. But you, it's amazing that you, what you have done. And the fact is, is that, I mean, the only comfort I derive is the fact that you will be leaving us, but you have left many of these other communities and done all your very good works, and they all seem to still be surviving after you've left. So I'm feeling fairly comfortable with the fact that you have actually, really, you and the mayor in tandem have created a foundation for a city that actually is fiscally stable at a time when there is great instability everywhere. And then it's up to us to discuss the priorities. So thank you so much, Susan. And I'm hoping by June 29th that we'll have herd immunity and it might be an opportunity at least to eat some awkward cake with you or something. Looking forward to that.
Oh.
Thank you. Counselor LaBarge, then Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Counselor. Susan, I want to congratulate you. I really wouldn't like to see you go. I've worked with you for over 10 years. You have been extremely helpful with the knowledge of financing for me. I will miss you dearly, but I know you did state a couple of years ago, once your daughter got out of college, you would think about retiring. And at 36 years, I have to tell you, as our Financial Director, you had one of the biggest jobs, the most responsibility working with our mayor to pull through and work with us as counselors with the budget. I want to thank you for the weaving that you've done, absolutely beautiful. And also, I'm so happy that you'll be able to retire with your dogs and enjoy life. And you will be very, very missed by many of us in this city and especially me. So congratulations, Susan. And hopefully, once the COVID is over, we can all come up and congratulate you, give you a nice little arm hug and all, because I know for a fact I'm going to miss you and miss all the knowledge that you have taught me.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Council President. Director of Finance, Susan Wright. I, you know, I'm really glad you're going to be with us through this budget this year. I just don't understand why you're not going to make it through to the 30th, just like a budget does, but you're going to leave us on the 29th. I really appreciated that, you know, that I can never bring a question to you that was too stupid. You always honored, you know, and walked me through it. And also, you made city finances always super understandable, not only for me but for my colleagues and for the residents of Northampton. I mean, it would, it, somehow, when you explain stuff, it's just like plain as day, here it goes. And it's been a real benefit to everybody here. So thank you.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as a new counselor for, you know, answering all of my questions, for meeting with me. And I just felt like if I had a question, I would be able to get a great answer for it from you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think, as Counselor Dwight said, this will continue until you run screaming from the city. You'll be so sick of us, so.
We're going to do the budget, so.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm not, I don't like those communications, but thank you for that communication, Mayor Narcoitz. And we will now move on. So next up on the agenda is 20.123, A Resolution in Support of Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance. As the note on the agenda says, and as we did last time, the request is that we take up the resolution after the ordinance. So unless there's an objection, I'm going to reorder the agenda a bit to accommodate that request. Additionally, we have staff present to answer questions for the charter orders, which are also of interest to some of the public attending. So I'm going to move those orders up now for second reading. And then we'll go to the Plastic Reduction Sustainability Ordinance. And then we'll take the resolution in support of the ordinance after that. So for everyone playing at home, we're all playing at home, sorry. And we're going to go number 14, number 16 on the agenda, and then we'll go back up to number eight on the agenda. So number, let me scroll down to 14. And these are the orders for the Charter Amendments. So first is 20.183, An Order Amending the Charter to Mail Ballots for Municipal Elections to All Registered Voters. This is a second reading. And this does not, this one does not have any revised language, I believe. Here, I see Sister Seawald, I'm just going to unmute him now. This one hasn't been revised, right, Laura?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is the second reading on this, and there have been no changes from the first reading?
Move second reading, please.
Motion is made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Discussion on second reading. Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Next is 20.184, An Order Amending the Charter to Allow Resident Non-Citizens to Vote in Municipal Elections. Now, this does have revised language.
There's an amendment.
Move for purposes of discussion.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Dwight and seconded, I think, by Counselor Thorpe.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, session and Mr. Seawald, you can unmute if you'd like, if you want to lead off on it or if there's a preference for me to read the revised.
I'm happy to speak to this. Good evening, counselors. In reviewing these these orders, our Council President properly pointed out that while we had some of the language in here, particularly with regard to ward residents, was not also carried forward to both special elections and the regular city election. And after a lot of back and forth with the Council President, with the Council Administrative Assistant, and with the city clerk, I drafted language that incorporated into one section all of the non-citizen voting in each type of election, that being preliminary, special, and regular city elections, and added it as 8-6 and renumbered the subsequent articles. So this is our group effort, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Foster.
Thanks, trying to get my hand into the camera. Thanks, Sister Seawald. I do have a question as you are reading it. The clause about who is not otherwise disqualified from voting under state law, but given that state law doesn't make a provision for non-citizens to vote, are we, is, are we sort of taking that backwards there or is that clear in legal language?
I think it's clear. There are other bases for not being qualified to vote. And the word otherwise excludes the non-citizenship from one of, as one of those bases for non-qualification.
And other questions or comments? Counselor Dwight.
So I understand this correctly. This is essentially, the amendment is essentially a catch-all to correct the oversight in this and the other articles?
It would be in this one and the 16-year-old vote, both of them.
Okay. And it references these two. I mean, you know, of course, my greatest concern, and I honestly have no idea how deep the legislature dives in on any of these things, but I don't want to run the risk of confusing them or confusing the issue. I mean, the fact is, for instance, if they approve one and not the other, there's it wouldn't matter.
Wouldn't matter. If they approve both of them, they know, the House Counsel knows that these two would have to be combined into one sentence. I had them originally as one sentence when I solicited House Counsel's review. And House Counsel is the lawyer for the, you know, the House. They asked me to separate them so they could consider them separately. But knowing that they'd have to be combined into one section if they both passed.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? No, seeing none. Okay, roll call, please, Laura.
Okay, is a motion to accept the amendment necessary since, as it was approved in first reading?
My motion was, my motion was for to approve for purposes of discussion. So now, as I understand, I'll change the motion to make a motion to accept the amendment.
Second up.
Okay. Any discussion to that motion that was just made? On this amended language, no? Okay, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yeah.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Next is 20.185, An Order Amending the Charter to Make Clarifications and Correct Deficiencies in the prior language. This also has amended a revised language.
Move approval and for proposed amendment.
I'm going to.
Made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Sister Seawald, would you like to talk about this one?
Once again, I've had assistance, this time from the city clerk, who pointed out that I had left in a reference to the city clerk as requiring signatures to get on a ballot that the city clerk would no longer be on. So I have amended Section 14 of this order to eliminate the city clerk from that sentence. That's the change that I made.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura, on this order with the revised language.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. And last is 20.186, An Order Amending the Charter to Allow Residents 16 Years of Age or Older to Vote in Municipal Elections.
Approval, please. With the applied amendment.
Applied amendment.
Revised, this revised language, okay, made by Counsel Dwight, seconded by Counsel Labarge. Solicitor Seawald, this is same as the other, but.
Same as the, the non-citizen voting, this is the companion language that would be merged into one. One article if, if passed.
Okay. Any? Questions? Okay. Seeing none, roll call please Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Thank you so much Solicitor Seawald for all the help, and thank you again to. The Charter Review Committee, I think there's at least one member who's on. Thank you, that's, I, I don't even, I don't even know how long, what, a year and a half maybe? Something like that. Something like that, yeah. So thank you for that amazing work, we send it to the State House with God's speed and our best hopes. And we're ready to move on, so now we're going to go just a little trip down on the agenda to ordinances. And we're at 20.114, plastic reduction and sustainability ordinance on second reading.
Move approval after you recognize Counsel Jarrett.
Sorry, Counsel Jarrett.
Thank you. Yeah, so the city solicitor has advised that I recuse myself from this item and the resolution. Due to a possible financial impact on my business, the Pedal People Cooperative, so I'll be recused for these two items, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dwight.
So that move approval of, the way, I'm sorry, worth the ordinance, right?
Yes.
Got it, yeah, so move approval, please.
Second.
Counselor Thorpe, I believe, was the second, yes?
Yes.
Well, I think he snuck in right before you, Counsel.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Good try. Okay, made by Counsel Dwight, seconded by Counsel Thorpe. Discussion on second reading. Counselor Dwight.
I defer to the, the cosponsor, Counsel Mayori, please.
Counsel Mayori.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to actually remove the bag fee amendment that we had placed in there. Prior. I, I'm very grateful to my fellow councilors for your votes last, last meeting. And so it's really not about the vote, it's really about further reflection. We see this bag fee as a solid amendment, an important part of promoting reusability. But if we can, if we take it out, we can consider it separately. Potentially as its own ordinance, and that will afford us more time to hear from businesses, as well as the community on this. Just make sure we have all the, you know, considered all the factors at stake. Give it, give us time to get a more precise idea of what businesses would fall under this. Under the 5,000 square feet and the impact it would have on them and customer, and their customers. We're on a really good roll here with outreach with our businesses, and I'm confident that we can look at this and bet it a little bit more fully because it was added later. And, and keep that, that good feeling of, of, of discussing and considering. Through all the stakeholders' eyes, so. I say, why not utilize the time we have with the delay of the start of the plastics ordinance? To take our time with this one, and I'm sure we can have something in place by the time the plastics ordinance rolls around next year.
Okay, so that was, that's a motion to amend, and just.
Second.
Find where we are, so, and seconded by Counsel Dwight, and just so people know, so this is amending section B, number nine, right? And remending by removing number nine, section B?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion, Counsel Dwight.
Thank you, Counsel Mayori, and, and also thank you to the Youth Commission. And I, I, I hope this demonstrates once again. How responsive the sponsors have been, and, and especially the Youth Commission as we crafted and worked on this, and that. That the idea was not to ram anything by anybody or, you know. Hamstring people, the whole idea was to actually move forward with. As aggressively as possible with a progressive. Climate, you know, at, at ordinance that will actually have an impact. On our contribution to the climate crisis that, that so often we heard, that we've heard described. In the course of the public comment, we heard in the, the course of the inaugural. And everything else, I would also like to, to Counsel Mayori's point, I think. Maybe possibly even expand the opportunity for a discussion, that maybe we can find some sponsors for how. We can come up with an ordinance that comprehensively addresses, or at least more comprehensively addresses, the waste stream and our contribution to the waste stream. And that's actually been a critical issue facing this town since we closed our landfill. And. The, the associated secondary and tertiary costs that have long gone unrecognized, so I look forward to that debate. And look forward to hopefully crafting some. Some more good law, which I believe this, though, on is, so, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Nash, to the amendment?
Yes, I, I, first of all, Counselor Mayori, thank you for your discussions around this. And that, that I really look forward to working with you further on, you know, this is, this is a, a, a good piece of legislation. And I think that with further outreach, we can, we can, we can. As Counselor Dwight said, actually possibly expand the number of businesses that could be included under this. And so I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank the Youth Commission, the sponsors. And, and the advocates as well, and, and also a shout out to Noah for his, his keen negotiating skills earlier today. So, anyway, yeah, onward and forward, this is, this, you know, I, let's put this through a separate track. And, and I think we're going to come up with something even better, so thank you.
Counsel Labarge, to the amendment on the floor.
That's what I'm going to talk about, Counsel. Okay. Counselor Mayori, I want to thank you for what you have brought forth. I think it's extremely valuable of working, contacting more businesses and working with the businesses, and I think you, all you councilors know. That I feel that transparency and communication is so valuable, and I think we're going to move forward with it, and I'm very pleased with that. I want to thank the Youth Commission. I want to also thank the Commission on Disabilities, who had great concerns and were very vocal about the issues with straws and so forth. I'm very happy, I've talked with many business owners myself, very happy about the extension of the time and so forth. I'm going to support this 100%.
Okay, Counsel Mayori.
I believe the cosponsor, Chair Noah Cassis, may want to be recognized and speak to the amendment.
Who knows here? Is there a motion to recognize?
Make a motion to recognize Noah.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counsel Labarge, seconded by Counsel Nash, any discussion on the motion recognized? Roll call please on recognizing, let's say recognizing any of the sponsors.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Please. Recuse.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Did I miss Counselor Thorpe, or I missed somebody?
I think. Believe it was me Laura.
Okay, Counsel Mayori, thank you.
Yes.
Oh yes, that was it.
Okay. Noah, hello. You are.
Great, yeah. Thank you. I, I don't mean to cut into the middle of the discussion, sorry, I was a minute late, I was off. Doing something else, and then Rachel texted me, but I got here a minute late, so I just wanted to, I'm assuming that what already happened from context is that Rachel, Counsel Mayori. Introduced the amendment to withdraw the, the bag fee provision, and others were talking about that, yeah, I think, you know, I think it's something that. You know, we're really grateful to Counsel Nash for bringing up, which is that I think it's a good point that, you know, we, we worked so hard to do all the business outreach, that it would just be a bummer if. You know, if this in any way kind of undercut that, and while the Youth Commission and the sponsors still very much believe, you know. The bag fee is the right thing to do, it, there's no reason not to do some more due diligence, go talk to some of the businesses. Think through the square footage number a little bit more carefully than has been done, and then, you know, we got a year until this goes into effect, so we'll be back. You know, we'll be back in, in a month or two or three or whatever, and, and push on it again, so, yeah, I just want to say. That, and then I, I guess, I'll wait until a motion is made for the, for the actual vote to talk in more general terms.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion to the amendment striking this number nine under section B? Seeing none, Laura, can we take a roll call on that amendment?
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, discussion as amended, Counsel Dwight.
I need to recognize the very graceful and selfless letter. That was written in the Gazette by Rich Cooper. The. You know, Rich, of course, has been part of this discussion and process. And he was originally with the bag ordinance as well. And. His, his form of advocacy is the type that I think goes usually unrecognized and honored, and I think I. Do in some small way, express my gratitude for the way he conducts his advocacy and how effective it is. And while acknowledging and recognizing that he, he, this does present as a hardship for him. But what he stated was that. They faced other hardships, and the mission, the objective. Was required, required that of them, and they stepped up each time, he's done that. He was the first store locally, I believe, to stop selling cigarettes. He, he realized it was a significant revenue loss, but at the same time, he couldn't square it with his own sense of devotion to the community. He's done, he's done this time and time again, and it, it really does, and, and it makes a significant difference in the way we advocate for this ordinance, I think, that. I. And he said everything I wish I could have said a lot more clearly and a lot more thoughtfully, so. I just, it's very important that that be recognized.
I, I agree with that sentiment. Other? Other discussion? Counsel Nash.
And we're speaking to the ordinance now?
Yes, as amended.
Yeah, yeah, and so. First of all, you know, I just want to say that, first a shout out to Rich, thank you Rich, that was the kindest letter anybody's written for my work. Or for Counselor Mayori, I imagined, is, as well, and, and just the general work of the council. We really appreciate it, and we appreciate the, the can-do approach to, you know, that, to moving forward, and. And I'm expecting that we're going to find the same middle ground around the, 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 the bag fee. So, a, a thank you there. You know, throughout this, you know, process for me, the thing I keep harking back to is that I remember when I was a kid. And there was no plastic, line flying all over the place. When I was a kid, you know, when I, growing up, you know, as a, as a younger kid in St. Louis, Missouri, or, or in Clayton, that. That I remember the milkman coming down the street on really hot, hot days, and he would take out these huge cubes of ice from the truck, and he would smash them on the sidewalk. And, and, and it was all for the neighborhood kids, they'd crowd around, and we'd grab chunks of these ice, of the ice to be sucking on it, and it's 95 and it's humid. And the reason I'm mentioning this is that. That's what was on this, it was that, and what was on the sidewalk was, you know, some leaves and, and maybe some broken glass. But, but by and large, there wasn't cans and plastic and stuff flying around everywhere. And I remember, you know, it, it, growing up through the 70s, that suddenly all of this stuff would just be appearing, you'd be driving down the highway. You see stuff caught in the trees, and, or you're walking through the woods, and you see, you know, a, a Fanta can there on the side, you know, just tossed there. And that, you know, this, are, the, that our whole way of going about, you know, disposing of stuff, we, we create this stuff that just ends up all over the environment. And that it's just, it's just really atrocious. And that, and I, I don't see, what I, what I keep hoping we get to, within where we're going here is, is getting back to products. That are either completely recyclable, or just simply decay and go away, you know, that. That, that. You know, that somebody goes on a picnic, and people 30 years from now don't have to see the remains of their picnic. You know, that we don't see the remains of many of our, you know, ancestors that came before us, you know, we. We got archaeologists sifting through dirt to find things, all of the wood, all of the bones, all of this, the stuff that they use for tools is gone. But, you know, the last 30 years, it's in the soil and it's all over the place, and the archaeologists can't get it out of the way fast enough. So, um. Anyway, so I, I, I just want to say that I, I'm very appreciative of, you know, of this supporting this, this series of changes. And that I, it, it's definitely moving in the right direction, and that I, I buy into the mission. And, and I really appreciate all of the due diligence that everybody has done around this. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go, so Noah, and then Counsel Mayori. Wait, hold up Noah.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just want to do a little round of similarly to Counsel Nash, just do a quick round of thank yous. It's been a long, a long journey, I think everything that has to be said has been said, but let me do a couple thank yous. Thanks to Counsel Mayori, obviously, for being, and Counselor Dwight for being really steadfast. Sponsors and working with the Youth Commission for months and months and months to get this done. Thanks to Counsel Nash for doing so much hard work through community resources and spending so much of your own time to talk to businesses. Thanks to Clint Richmond from the Sierra Club and Brookline, who's given a lot of kind of expert help. Thanks to Eli and Ben and Jonathan from the Youth Commission, who've been really working on this for a long time, and thanks to the rest of the, the Youth Commission Sustainability Team, who've been working on it for. Shorter amounts of time, and then thank you so much to our, really, the Youth Commission's really steadfast and really, really helpful partners, Marty Nathan and Renapai. And the whole Two Degrees Climate Group, who's been here lots of times and, and done a lot of, a lot of testimony in support of it. Yeah, I just, I guess, you know, we're, we're here, and, and thank you to the council for supporting this measure, I think it's really important, I'm glad we went through the, the process of really getting feedback and really incorporating. Concerns, especially during this time, and I think it's. It's a good step, it's a good step, there's going to be lots of next steps, but it's a good step.
Thank you, Counsel Mayori. Counsel Mayori, you're muted.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, not only, you know, am I proud about, and really grateful to have this opportunity and this experience so soon in my council career. to have this opportunity and this experience so soon in my council career, but I'm proud of the ordinance, but I'm really proud of the process and what I learned. And thank you, Counselor Nash. Thank you to the youth, the Mayor's Youth Commission. I think North Hampton is well positioned for positive change with the Youth Commission as their fuel. Thank you, Eli Marlin, all the Youth Commissioners, and Renapai and Marty Nathan, who, you know, this had to be a labor of love because it was a lot of work. So I really appreciate all the hours you put into it. And also, thanks to Jesse Adams for jumpstarting this. It feels like so long ago that I talked to him about it and he shared his work, but thank you. And, you know, so much gratitude to the thoughtful businesses who did, who spent time with us and, and put a lot of thought into this and were open-minded. And, yeah, I just see this as the beginning of an exciting conversation about what other climate healing steps we can take right here in our community.
Thanks. Counselor Dwight?
I, I think Counselor Quinlan was before me, though.
Oh, I didn't see him.
No, no, okay. I, I, I'm just going to toot the horn of the Youth Commission, first of all. I mean, and by the way, the discussion of the two items, the two major items that we just, we have on our agenda tonight, the, the voting one, particularly the 16-year-old vote, and this ordinance have actually been products of the diligence of not just this Youth Commission that, that Noah presides over, but two commissions, I mean, two cycles of the Youth Commission previous. The fact is, is that they were invested in this project without, with the awareness that it might not be realized in the time that they served. They, there, there is probably total of like 50 Youth Commissioners who are now spread out throughout the world who don't, never really got to see this realized, and the same with the 16-year-old vote. But the fact is that they still devoted their time and energy and good thought to the process. And there is a deep and abiding value to empowering this cohort and other cohorts, of course, as well, as we expand agency among not only our youth, but everyone else who we've heard from ever since I've been seated Counselor, is agency to all the people who feel disenfranchised and not able to be part and contributing. So the Youth Commission, as I want us to recognize that it is not just a feel-good established committee that, you know, gives kids a hobby. This is actually an integral part of the functioning of the city government that we, we, and the functions that we perform. The, the Stormwater runoff ordinance, that actually had major contribution from the Youth Commission. All people vested in the prospects of a hopeful and aspirational future and the work that they've invested in it. So honestly, the, very few of these things probably would have come to pass if, if it were not for the commitment of our youth. And so therefore, I really do hope people, I, I really won't, I won't give quarter to anyone who gives me an argument that they're not qualified to participate in the, in their governance, so.
Thank you. Other comments? I will join in on, on the very well-deserved thanks to, to everyone. And I, I really feel like this, this ordinance is a perfect example of what we can do when we work together with genuine engagement. And, and I know the process of what we do feels long. It is long, you know, kind of like the charter review orders before. And now this has been a long, long process. And when you go through the history like Counselor Dwight or Counselor Mayory, where many people don't even realize how long. But, but when we work together in this way, things can really be made stronger and that's really what collaboration is. And I think that that's a really important thing to note, that this kind of engagement from the community, the Youth Commission, who have just been unbelievable, I've been blown away, impressed by them, and the engagement from the, the residents who this, this work means the world to them. And then the, the counselors, the sponsors, but also Counselor Nash, who just really went above and beyond for this. And you're, all of that engagement and with the businesses and the business owners like, like Rich Cooper. So when we work together in earnest, it's really amazing how strong and how we can really improve on initial ideas and the finished product, while it takes a while and it's maybe not fun to watch or participate in sometimes, is, is stronger and the better for it. So my heartfelt thanks to everybody and, because it's really, it's been a remarkable thing to watch and to participate in, and I'm very, very grateful for it. Any other, any other comments before we take a final vote on this ordinance? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorp?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayory?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Hey, that passes in second reading. Thank you very much, all. We are now going to go back up in the agenda to the resolution. So this is 20.113, a Resolution Support of Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance. This is on first reading, and let me open it up. This is upon, this is in the year 2020, so we should amend that. But this is upon the recommendation of the Mayor's Youth Commission, Counselor William H. Dwight and Counselor Rachel Mayory. A Resolution Support of Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of North Hampton, City Council assembled as follows. Whereas the city of North Hampton has a duty to protect the natural environment, the economy, and the health of its citizens. And whereas polystyrene, polyethylene, polyethylene, terephthalate, and polyvinyl chloride are typically made from fossil fuels, a non-renewable resource. And whereas further, that production of such plastics is driving fossil fuel extraction. And whereas the manufacturer use and disposal of these plastics requires substantial energy consumption and contributes to the greenhouse gases that further climate change and result in adverse local and global environmental effects. And whereas plastics one through six are common environmental pollutants that fragment into smaller, non-biodegradable pieces that harm or kill marine life and wildlife when ingested. And whereas the Environmental Protection Agency states that, quote, quote, that such materials can also have serious impacts on health, human health, wildlife, the aquatic environment, and the economy, end quote. And whereas styrene, a component of polystyrene, is a known hazardous substance classified by the National Toxicology Program, NTP, as, quote, reasonably anticipated to be a human carcinogen, end quote, and as a potential food and beverage contaminant that may, quote, leach from polystyrene containers used for food products, end quote. And whereas polyethylene, terephthalate, and polystyrene are based on benzene, which is known, is a known carcinogen and hazardous substance, whereas polystyrene and polyvinyl chloride are generally not recyclable. Whereas polystyrene is used as food service ware by food establishments and packing material by retail establishments operating in the city of North Hampton. Whereas disposable food service ware constitutes a portion of the litter in North Hampton streets, parks, and public spaces, which increases municipal expenses. And whereas biodegradable and/or compostable materials are available as affordable and effective alternatives to most plastic products. And whereas New York, California, Oregon, Hawaii, Puerto Rico, American Samoa Islands, Northern Mariana Islands, U.S. Virgin Islands, and Guam have enacted plastic bag bans, with Connecticut, Delaware, and Maine having passed plastic bag, bag ban legislation not yet in effect, and with Vermont having passed a comprehensive single-use plastic ban. And whereas over 100 municipalities of the United States, Canada, Europe, and Asia have banned polystyrene food service ware, including Amherst, Brookline, Great Barrington, Somerville, Cambridge, and South Hadley, in addition to 41 other municipalities in Massachusetts, as well as Oakland, California, Chicago, Illinois, Miami Beach, Florida, Albany, New York, New York, New York, Portland, Oregon, and Seattle, Washington. Now, therefore, the city of North Hampton acts to enact an ordinance to prohibit the use and distribution of polystyrene, polyethylene, terephthalate, polyethylene, and polyvinyl chloride in food service ware and packaging material and require instead the use and distribution of certified biodegradable, compostable, reusable, and recyclable products or materials. Okay. Counselor?
Move approval, please?
Second it.
It's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge.
And I'd also like to propose some amendment and the last whereas to include the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts. Because when this, this was first drafted, they hadn't passed one at that point. So the, and, and then, yeah, well, so I'll need a second on that.
Second?
Okay.
And if I, I mean, if I could speak to the resolution. This is a little, this is a little unusual and we've only done this once before, I think, with the, the security camera discussion. It's a reinforcing document for an ordinance that we just passed and, and patted ourselves on the back a lot about it. This is originally part of that ordinance, essentially, the language here, but it is a preamble, basically a descriptor on emphasizing the urgency and why we should act on this. So it was a form of advocacy built into the ordinance. But since ordinances don't have advocacy incorporated in them, the Youth Commission was interested and wanted it to be memorialized in the, in the form of a resolution. I mean, I'm going to presume a foregone conclusion on this. I mean, I think it'd be a little strange if we voted opposition of this, given, given the fact that what we just did in, in the last few minutes. So it is, but, I mean, I, I think everyone can appreciate the, the, the points that are made and embedded in this resolution and, in fact, actually probably more aware of these various elements, these chemical and fossil fuel-generated plastics than they ever had hoped to be in the course of their lifetime. And, and, and then lastly, I'd like to commend the council president's capacity and ability to pronounce every damn one of them right, so.
You gave me a cheat sheet earlier on one of them.
Good on you. Good on you.
I, may I ask a question to the sponsors on, so my question is on the last paragraph. So it's, it's unusually worded for a resolution. Usually it ends with "now therefore be it resolved." And the way it's worded, it's sort of stating a fact, which we can now state because we have passed that ordinance. So it's not an incorrect fact, but generally a resolution is more of an expression as opposed to a, a statement, where this is stating that we act to enact an ordinance, which is sort of an unusual rule for a resolution.
Yeah, I take your point and I think it's appropriate to modify the language to actually emphasize the support of the ordinance that we just passed, which.
Which is also what the title is, "Believe," but it's not stated.
Right. It's self-congratulatory in that respect, yes. So I would actually, let's see, propose an amendment that now therefore the city of North Hampton restates its support for the ordinance, for the ordinance, I believe that, how's that? For the ordinance to prohibit the use and distribution of polystyrene, polyethylene, terephthalate, blah, blah, blah. Does that make sense? So Laura, did you get that, the languages to delete "acts to enact"? And delete that and replace, now therefore, the city of North Hampton asserts its support of the ordinance would be the replacement language.
Okay, got it.
I think there's a, we need a second on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just sort of further, just maybe to put a finer point on it, now that I heard you say it, also, a resolution can't act to enact something. So I think it's important that we make that distinction.
As I said, I mean, this is, this is a reflection of the fact that this was removed from the original ordinance, so it's, that accounts for its awkwardness.
I thought I saw hands. Counselor Quinlan, then Counselor Foster.
Thank you. I was, I was pretty confused as to why we would vote in support of something that we just supported. And, and I, so I appreciate the explanation, you know, I mean, I just would mention, you know, it's, it's been less than two years knocking on doors, introducing myself in this ward. And one of the great community criticisms of the council over the years has been the amount of time spent on resolutions that don't apply to the city. That said, I've really enjoyed explaining the value of resolutions, you know, and how a voting body does this together. You know, so like I said, I just, I just wanted to express that I didn't, I, you know, in the, this morning I was thinking about it and I didn't kind of feel like I liked being backed into a corner to vote yes on this resolution when I feel like, felt at the time that it was maybe a waste of our time. But you certainly wouldn't vote no on a resolution that supports an ordinance you just voted yes on. So the contradiction had me pretty confused this morning. So I appreciate the explanation and just wanted to, to mention my previous confusion.
Just some response?
Yeah, sure.
To that point. I, I, as you know, the resolutions provide something that ordinances don't, which is the expressed will of the council as you, as, and I know as you've repeated over and over and over again, as have I, over the course of our, our tenure. And so this is perhaps gilding the lily in some respect, but the point is, is that right now, our only support for the spirit and the sentiment embedded in this ordinance is not expressed. It's only, it's now, it's simply a law, a very cold and law that, that doesn't reflect our, our concern and earnest concern about the impacts that the continued use of these products will leave us with. So I think in that respect, I mean, that's why, and I had suggested to the Youth Commission because they had a right to be proud of this language and in large respect that, that we would introduce it in the form of a resolution that would be applied and would reassert and memorialize our, our concerns and our devotion to the issue, so.
You had me at gilding the lily.
Um, so we haven't voted on, I think, maybe we'll bundle these amendments. Counselor Foster, of course, I'm sorry, I forgot you'd raised your hand before.
That's okay, I can raise it again. Counselor Quinlan, thank you, actually, you sort of expressed what has been going through my mind as well. Counselor Dwight, your, your explanation really helped and I appreciated the language of the resolution quite a bit and now I understand the thinking behind the both. And my, I actually raised my hand on just a very small wording thing, Counselor Dwight, as you were thinking through amended language. You said that the council asserts its support for, and I wondered if it would just be a little cleaner to say the council affirms its support for. Not attached to it, but just landed on me better.
I would say that, I would accept that as a friendly amendment to my amendment.
Laura, Laura, did you?
I was just going to say, the first time Bill made the amendment, he said it restates its support, so that's yet another asserts, restates, affirms.
I think affirms is actually, affirms is the, definitely the superior word here in that, yeah.
We're going to affirm, affirm.
I always bring my thesaurus to council meetings.
Um, okay, further discussion on this bundle of two, Counselor Nash amendments?
Yeah, I just want to thank the, the sponsors of this resolution for flipping the order on this, I really appreciate it. It, it does, it frees us up in terms of, you know, really, you know, getting through the legislation and then, and then it's good now that we can step back and say, here's the, the overall stuff that's driving us. And, and I, thinking back to, you know, how we got caught in that around the, the camera ordinances and, and that there was a lesson learned there and I really appreciate that, the attention to that, so thank you.
Other discussion on these amendments? Other discussion on these amendments? Okay, I don't see any. How about, let's do a roll call on these amendments, and then we'll see if there's other.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Okay, further discussion on the resolution as a whole as amended. I don't mean discussion from my kids, all I can hear right now. All right, I don't see any, so roll call please on the resolution amendment, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
With respect to suspension, a call for suspension of rules to allow for a second reading.
I second that.
There's a name seconded for suspension of rules, discussion? Roll call please on suspending rules.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes, and move second reading, please.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Foster, made by Counselor Dwight on second reading, discussion on second reading. Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, thank you very much. All right, so we've done resolutions, we're down to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the titles and ask if there are any removals for discussion, as there is no discussion on the consent agenda. First item is, are the minutes of December 17, 2020. Next is 20.162, appointments to various committees. These have all received a positive recommendation from city services. To the Arts Council, Jesse Hasenger at 184 Main Street Apartment 4. The term is January 2021 to June 2024, this is to fill a vacancy. To the Housing Partnership, Sarah Howard, 8 High Street Florence, term January 2021 to June 2024, this is to fill a vacancy. Human Rights Commission, Kathy Wicks, 102 Black Birch Trail Florence, term January 2021, June 2024, this is to fill a vacancy. Northampton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Joella Tarbatten, 81 Con Street Apartment 626, term January 2021 to June 2022, to fill a newly created position on the NIH Board of Commissioners through the special act. Then, now moving to 21.187, appointments to various committees. These are for referral to city services. Arts Council, Dana Osterling, 58 Paradise Road Apartment 1. The term is February 2021 to June 2024, this is to fill a vacancy. Houliani Davis, 112 Franklin Street, term February 2021 to June 2024, this is to fill a vacancy. Historical Commission, Dr. Jonathan Dow, 15 Carolyn Street in Florence, term February 2021, June 2024, to fill a vacancy. Reverend Harvey Hill, 19 Ward Avenue, Northampton. The term is February 2021 to June 2024, to fill a vacancy. And that is the consent agenda, Counselor Jarrett.
I'd like to request the removal of the appointment of Sarah Howard to the Housing Partnership.
Okay, so that has been removed, that appointment, Sarah Howard and Housing Partnership's been removed. Is there?
Move approval with the removal.
Motion's been made.
With the removal.
Seconded by Counselor Labarge to, on the consent agenda minus the removal. Oh my God, my kids are so, there is no discussion on the consent agenda, so roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Sorry, distracted there, yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes, at least your kids are quiet.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Attention has passed, Counselor Jarrett.
Sarah Howard is my spouse, so I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay.
Move approval of Sarah Howard's appointment, please.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge and Sarah Howard's appointment. It's been removed, so any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Okay. Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that appointment has been approved, and Counselor Jarrett can come back, and we are going to recess for finance. Laura, can you please call the role of finance?
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, we only have one item on this agenda, and that's approval of minutes from the previous meeting, which was December 17, 2020. Which is made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that's only items, so is there a motion to adjourn finance?
To adjourn.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Labarge, roll call please on adjourning, Laura.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, we're back in the full council, and we're up to financial orders on second reading. We're at 20.178, in order to increase personal property tax exemption threshold to $2,500 on second reading. Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight, any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes on second reading, 20.179, in order to authorize borrowing $1.5 million for paving projects.
Move second reading, please.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge, discussion on second reading. Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes. Okay, that passes in second reading, next is 20.180, in order to appropriate free cash of $1.5 million to stabilization capital stabilization fiscal stability stabilization funds. Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, discussion on second reading. Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge. Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Hey, that passes on second reading, and moving on, we have already done those charter orders, so we skip over those. And look at that, we've already done that ordinance. Well, look at this.
There's no power left.
There's one more? Oh, good, I was like, what am I, okay, I'm not.
Second.
Right? All right, motions were made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by who was that?
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Dwight.
Speaking in the third person.
Counselor Shara asked for a roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Dwight says yes.
Counselor Foster.
Counselor Foster also says yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Counselor Labarge says yes, definitely.
Counselor Maori.
Well, Counselor Maori has to say yes, too.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes, that's enough of that.
We are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
See you next week, oh, I should have said this in announcements, next Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
The joint City Council School Committee meeting that we have annually, so that's next Thursday. It's not a usual council meeting for us, next Thursday, 7:00 PM, there is that joint meeting. So see you all then.